Yeah, we're good.
We're good, okay. Welcome, we appreciate our still working here to have a meeting in the city council. Also welcome our administration and staff and the citizens who have decided to join the meeting today. We're gathered in the Provo State Center Conference Room at 3:00 PM Eastern. And the time is 12:10 PM on November 16th.
I'm Curtis.
Tasmory Board Member.
Okay, yeah.
Should I say City Board Member? Or you know, School District City, whatever.
Jamaica.
What are you?
Sorry, just to go back. It's not over.
Marcia Jeffins.
Dave Sewell.
Janine Leese.
Brian Jones.
Kim Santiago.
Julie Rash.
Cliff Strachan.
Shannon Colson.
Dave Kack.
McKay Jensen.
George Stewart.
Michelle Cahuosi.
David Harding.
Stephanie Bryant.
Wayne Parker.
Thank you. We will now have a clarification from the school board. We appreciate you having me. And I'll give you my strawberries. I don't cookie today. It could be even positive reinforcement here.
And you have all these other leaders of the community as we hope to meet and discuss issues that affect citizens and the students in this city. We're grateful that we're citywide and that we are better able to compromise and make the needs and discuss the issues in what just wants to be. We're grateful for the blessings of this group and the people that are blessed and that will nourish and strengthen our values. This was sent from Jesus Christ.
Thank you very much.
We'll jump right into the first time. We're going to sit with the actually team that did the BRT project in Provo City. And we're going to ask Brian Jones to sort of present to the school.
I'm going to be sorry, it's the first time I've been there. Anyway, I was going to be great. And just to introduce you, if you have questions about the background, then I'll get you to know that. So, if you're familiar with the BRT project, you know that a few months ago, the city councils in both Provo and Provo passed resolutions authorizing cities to enter into lease agreements with UTA. The purpose of those lease agreements is to say that certain parts of city roads in Provo, particularly 700 North, could be used as exclusive lands to the BRT project. And also some pieces of property along the sides of the road could be used for stations. A group of citizens that are opposed to the project started a petition to try to get a referendum overturning those resolutions. They did succeed in getting sufficient signatures for that required by the statute. And those signatures were certified by the county office. But then the city attorneys for both Provo and Provo issued letters to the city recorders indicating that those resolutions, in their opinion, are not legislated in nature. They were administrative functions of the councils, merely approving agreements, not actually making new law. And the referendum power reserved to people by the Constitution only applies to making laws. So, the city recorders in both cities rejected the petitions. The petitioners then filed, under the state statute, they filed what we call a writ for extraordinary relief with the Supreme Court, asking for the Supreme Court to order that the issue be put on the ballot. Timing wise, it's probably also important to know that by default, that wouldn't go on the ballot until November of 2017, because that's when the next regular election is. What's that? Yes, the next regular municipal election. And so, in response to that petition, the Supreme Court's vote, Provo and Provo have filed replies explaining to the court why we don't believe that this was in fact a legislative act and the referendum power doesn't apply. And now we're really, we're kind of in limbo. I mean, that's kind of as much as I can tell you about where we're at. It's up to the Supreme Court to decide what to do next. They could just order a hearing based on the documents that they already have, or they could decide that since the election is potentially over a year away, that they want a lot more documents to review. So, they could order a full briefing schedule and the hearing could be months away. They really don't know. We're just waiting to hear back from the court about what the next step is in their view. And in the meantime, there's a lot about the project that's moving forward, because the only thing that the referendum is about is whether or not these lease agreements are valid. It doesn't, even where the referendum should go on to the ballot, it doesn't affect any other part of the project. They can just, the little pieces of property that are involved in these leases. So, there's a lot about the project that's still moving forward, but when the mayor or the day raise would be more able to answer questions about that, then I can. That's what I had. I'm happy to answer your questions.
If we don't lease, then it also has a financial impact.
Yes. And what that financial impact is, is really kind of up in the air. The leases, the funding of the project is $65 million in local bond that's repaid to the county through UTA revenues, and $75 million in federal matching grant, and $10 million that is not actually in cash. It's the value of the leases. And it's what gets the federal government to turn over 75 million in matching instead of 65 in matching. So, if the leases go away, it would potentially have the impact of reducing the amount of the federal matching funds, which could impact the design of the project.
So, have all parties conceded that the lease is the only thing that's out of question?
Well, that's the only thing that they have petitions to do. I mean, well, it's interesting, because the petition that they filed with the court actually asked the court to order a complete stop to the project. But in a sense, that doesn't really make sense, because the only thing they have asked to put on the ballot is whether or not those resolutions should be overturned. The only thing that those resolutions do is approve the lease.
So, even if that is successful, if it is successful, change the project. Follow the time frame.
Right. That's our opinion. You know, there is, yeah. They've made this argument, there is a criteria for the federal matching funds, that a certain percentage of the project has to be in exclusive lands, right? So, the petitioners have made an argument that if they succeed and the leases go away and UTA can't use 700 North for an exclusive land, that the percentage is not met anymore. Their assumption is that that makes the federal funds go away entirely. UTA and FPA, so far as the leases are communicated to us, don't believe that's actually the case. We'll either grant, most likely we'll grant an extension, or redesign the projects so that the percentage is still there. But depending, you'll get a different answer.
Are there other questions for Mr.? Well, we're going to go on to the next item, which is a discussion on the Provo School District tax increase and how we might better collaborate. And unfortunately, that's my personal policy about this impact. It would be better, you know, I feel it would be good to have a broader discussion. But in the past ten years that I've been on the council, we do collaborate and coordinate efforts. You know, when we first started, we first went and we were actually senior year, we were pushing through the bond for schools and the deal. We ended up changing course on some of the things that we were going to do that year, so that we weren't overburdening citizens in the unit difficult. And I think there's been some good collaboration in that way. And within this year, when you decided to increase the tax, the property tax, what we have, we're kind of hard. And so, hoping to understand a little bit where you were coming from and maybe figure out how we could collaborate better in the future on these types of decisions. Because from my understanding, it's a hundred dollars for the average 200,000.
Approximately.
Over what it would have been.
What it would have been.
So, there's what people feel and what we have to put in the paper, but we're trying to move the tax rate to 75% of what it was in 2013. The tax rate is, as far as the rate, is still below, it's 25% below 2013, because valuations are going up so quickly. And I think maybe the collaboration part was, because it convotedly weighed that it's, you know, many entities do it every year to keep up with inflation. It's a matter, of course, they file the truth and taxation hearing, they just do it, they try and move it, they try and move their rates to just adjust for inflation. And we have not done that for nine years, is that correct?
Since 2009, I think.
Seven years. And so, but I know that there've been city representatives that bring retreats where we get together and where we said, is it this year, or it's next year, is it this year? It's always down, but it's never been the, I think it was more for coordination, because it is the voted way with the bond. There is direct impacts, you know, suddenly, certainly there's direct impact on this as well. But just trying to, people don't notice that their taxes go down with the rates, with the valuations, because valuations go up and they just see their taxes go increase.
That's not true. If the valuation goes up, somebody, you're at a fixed rate, and so their tax should not go up.
Our rates drop with the valuation.
Right, so the rate goes down with the valuation.
So, their prior tax, had we not done this raise, their taxes this year actually, because their tax rate would have dropped.
The tax rate would have dropped, but the bill is still the same.
Their actual tax would have depended on their market access. Still, as if their taxes are being raised, they don't feel the...
Yeah. I know that especially with commercial buildings, they look at the tax, when they're being taxed on the full amount, they don't get the exemption. They see the valuations go up and they see their bills go up every year and they think, oh, everybody's getting more money. And you know that the city doesn't get more money, we don't get more money. We've had growth in the last seven years. There's been inflation in the last seven years. And more than actually trying to keep up with that, all we're trying to do is make sure that we can retain teachers, attract and retain teachers.
And I want to just clarify one thing. I think we're in the same boat in a lot of ways of having a lot of infrastructure needs and having a lot, we have a lot of needs, but scarce funds, right? And so, we're both entities are trying to figure out how to provide services to our residents and to provide service, really, you know, good services and make sure that we have them. So, I don't think the question is whether you should be doing this or not. The question is collaboration.
And I think in hindsight...
We should have, we should have, we should have done better.
And, you know, we talked about it a bit in our meeting and, you know, I brought it up. And we were all kind of like, oh, yeah, we should have done that. But then, I think where we would have talked about it is in our, because we weren't announcing or sure or anything for a long time until this debate before, but our meeting was, that's the meeting that it was not the agenda.
Well, I think that even if it's just a wonderful story, it tells the mayor or vice versa.
And I'm not trying to, I'm just saying, yeah, we should have. I think you're right, and we need to get that in our head. You know what I mean? We're not, we're not... Normally do, and we missed that meeting and it didn't make our... And so, we will apologize. I mean, seriously, we should have collaborated better. You've been, the city administration and the council have gone above and beyond call to just support us and collaborate. That's what we appreciate it and we should.
Yeah, I feel like there's a general point that we should and that we really enjoy this relationship.
Yeah, we do too. We appreciate it.
And it's so important, you know, we both, we're both texting.
The citizens of Provo appreciate it.
I do too. And I do too. And so, if we can, if there were any glitches in the process or something that we could clear up, we meet with the administration, by we did with the council leadership, by we did with the administration. And so, we can help, we can help the mayor or the council offices. Just that we have some kind of, this happened before right before our budget decisions were made. And so, it does affect what we do, because we, as you do, you look at the Provo burden on citizens and then decide, this is a real need, but can we do it this year? And so, we have to take all this...
I'm curious to know that it's been the reaction that you had. What have you heard? We were getting a lot of kickback for 15 cents a month. And I'm just curious now to what you were thinking about for $100 a year, what you've heard.
We did have, certainly not as lively as any of your BRT council meetings, but we had people who came and spoke and had some questions. Personally, as soon as I say we're looking for our teachers, a majority of this is for our teachers and to retain them. People, because people talk to us about that all the time. People notice when their teacher, when the teacher that they expected their child to have in fifth grade isn't there. When the teacher that they wanted their kid to take math from in junior high isn't there. When teachers leave, they notice. And they've been noticing that a lot. They talk to us a lot. As soon as we bring that up, they're like, oh, okay. So, I think the justification has aided us a bit. I haven't, my phone hasn't run since last week at all. So...
I haven't received a single one at all. We had more people at the meeting speaking in favor of the tax increase than against it.
And there weren't that many.
There weren't that many people that were there, but I've received several emails and saying, thank you for this because of the concerns.
There have been some questions.
There have been questions.
You know, I think one thing that really helped too was we can't just raise taxes without a plan. We have a plan. Our, our union helped us formulate a really good use for the funds, and we put that out there. So, it's not just a tax or a tax increase or whatever. It's a tax, yeah, it's a tax. And I think that was one thing that helped, that the people agreed with that plan.
So, the council a few years ago had a, sorry, trying to blink on the words, but had a resolution, had a resolution, a budget intent, that we would raise taxes each year to make up for inflation. Same mechanism that you were talking about earlier. And then we reaffirmed that again this budget cycle. In the end, we chose not to follow that again this year. But there are some distinct advantages for keeping up with inflation yearly, rather than waiting seven years and then having a big jump.
I agree.
I recommend you look at that, see if it makes sense. And that makes it very easy to coordinate if both entities are taking baby steps, rather than trying to coordinate larger jumps. The other observation that I had, I don't know what other council members heard, but particularly in comparison to BRT, I actually didn't hear a lot of pushback on that 15 cent increase. That there were, I think maybe three people that I heard from, not necessarily directly, but, you know, in conversations, public policy lunches and whatnot. You would have conversations with them, well, let's just keep up with inflation. And these are people that are perfectly fine with the city revenues eroding to inflation. That's just, that's the perspective. Yeah, and so, at least my experience was very similar to what it sounds like the board experience was.
And you always use their scapegoat and say, at least we're not the school board.
I just wanted to comment on something Marcia said. When you mentioned that you felt like the city has been very cooperative and supportive here, so I was really glad to hear that. I've heard that in the past, it was always good. And so, I feel, and in a good direction there and how that continues. We really feel like we're just a part of the world.
I just want to add something on that too. I think that, kind of maybe speak for everybody, that, yeah, we are concerned, we hope, we can, we hope that this oversight, whatever, the fact that I or somebody didn't make that phone call was a damage to that. It certainly wasn't intentional. It really was that a phone call should have been made, but it wasn't something that we had, oh, let's not tell anyone. Like, that was never part of it. And we certainly don't want it to appear that our regard for the city and this relationship isn't important, because it is. And I can see it as a, I don't think that we see that as a cheap in our relationship in any way. I think it was just going forward. And I think we can collaborate and, and so that it helps both entities and that was just, that was the reason.
We've been on your end of this.
Well, I think it's something that we have learned from. Yeah, it's really, I think this is something we've learned from.
One of the questions that I am getting fair enough is, if we sold that Provo High for $25 million, why did we need the tax increase when we were already planning for Provo High? And I have a little, I don't know the numbers well enough to give an important answer.
It's a good question. I would like to step in for that question, please. You actually could ask it. You have a good answer.
You know, capital funds, so our capital funds are, for us, different. And I know that it goes into property tax, but if capital funds are part of the property funds, we go out for a bond campaign. We work really hard for a year to make our case. With the sale of Provo High, those capital funds will be, by statute, they have to remain capital funds. They can't be used for teacher salaries. They can't be used for curriculum or anything else. They can't be used to make up inflation to balance our budget. They have, the public's money has to remain a public investment. And we will, we continue to have capital needs in the district. So, in moving the site, the decision was made to move Provo High, because we needed a better school and we could build on that side. That means that it's going to require some additional funds. But we have 55 million bond funds. We are not, we can't borrow more than that for Provo High. So, we'll make up a little of the Provo High construction, but there's other capital needs in the district, including future needs. We have another elementary school that needs to be built. We have Dixon Middle School that needs to be rebuilt. We have balances that need to be maintained so that our interest rates stay low. And so, that division between capital and operating, and the operating ones where we pay our teachers, that's what we need to raise the taxes.
And I understand that, the concern, the question, I wonder if they'll allow us to not bond in the future.
No.
And so, that's what they're saying, well, we have this and it's still got to go to capital.
You're right. It's got to go to capital, but we can only have, by the accounting rules and again, legislative things, we can only have so much money in the bank. So, we can't trim our budget. They would rather have it in the public's own bank accounts than in the school district's bank account. And so, when it comes to building, you know, Howard Stevenson, he opposes lots of bonds when they don't come with a plan. But he also will come right out and tell you it's the fairest way to build a building. You have to make the case, you have to go to the public, you have to say this is what we need. And you build a building locally and the laws are structured that it's almost required that we're going to replace a building altogether, that's what we're going to do.
I don't know if you're asking about, because with 25 million, a lot of that is going to the Provo High. And so, the bond covered, I don't know if the thought was good for it, but then the inflation and... It's a full campus now, which is a lot of... So, we are taking that money that we, not all of it, but we're going to have to dip into fund balances and really scramble to try to make up that extra money. But what the sale does is allows us to do that without decreasing our capital funds.
And to be honest, we will use it on capital projects that are really difficult to take to the public. We need a new bus garage, but we need property for that. We need, we have capital projects that, if we want to, we don't want to go to a bond for administrative buildings or...
If they don't have to.
We don't have to. If we go for a bond, it's for a school. It's for a neighborhood school, if people take their kids into, it's an emergency gathering place, you know, in a disaster. That's what we bond for, for fences, for repairs, for other capital needs. We don't.
Please understand that. I understand what you're, I feel your pain. Sure, you feel ours in the same issue. I'm just getting, just the questions.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think that helps me.
And Gary, it's the, and we are in the same kind of area. They ask really hard questions, don't they?
They do.
They ask questions like, can you take that sell of Provo High, that money, and pay your bonds down?
Exactly.
And yes, we can. That's an option, but because of the needs of the school, we've opted not to exercise that option. So, there's two things you can do. You can pay your bonds down, or you can put it into facilities.
And pay our bonds down and raise the taxes, because we still have those needs.
Right, exactly. Right. So, I know, it's hard, Gary. I'll come talk to you and tell your moms about it.
One thing you mentioned there about a school being a gathering place to be in adversity. Me, in my neighborhood, the Spring Creek Elementary, thought that was the case. And we actually invited the Red Cross to come and talk about an adversity plan. And I said, oh, we would never have this school as headquarters for immigrants. We would never come here, because it doesn't have showers.
I've heard that before too. Do we have any getting up?
To any other peaceful... It doesn't have showers, so...
Just those lots of places in your neighborhood?
No.
No, there's none. And most of, a lot of the churches we've removed, you know.
Yeah.
So, that's one of their criteria, just to let you know. So, I can't be replaced. It was the seven days registered, that's why I'm not a part of it. That's just something to consider.
That's interesting.
I don't want to make assumptions that the school is the place to gather people on the Red Cross.
So, we did have one other item that has sort of an access to the tax, and it's, this is the discussion on the philosophy of the local agreements regarding tax increment. And I can't remember who asked to have this discussion, but I think it was just to find out what your philosophy is. We've had a few recent, you know, requests for this. One was for City View Apartments that was approved. And the other one was for, I believe it was Duncan Aviation. And was there another one? Was it the reinvestment? Was that the other one as well?
Plum Tree.
Reinvestment for Plum Tree? So, I can just... So, I don't know, Mr. Rick, if you wanted to, it sounded like you had something to share.
No, I just was here to say that those were the ones we were asking to replace the existing premium board or CBA. We want, in terms of a philosophy on their local agreements, we try to find a job. So, for example, Duncan Aviation is a third way to find out that we need to build, that's why they approached the school district and the city of how using tax increment to do that. For the downtown, the proposed downtown CBA is for a parking structure that's going to serve the surrounding area and protect development. They created, what they're going to use it for is to pay off, pay their impact fees, the city generally will pay fees.
I think in our discussions, we talked about different entities and what percentage that you allow for tax increment. That was where the question came. You want to know what was your philosophy as a board for tax increment financing? And I believe your percentage is 70% that you allow. How did you get that percentage? What was your philosophy to find that?
We have a policy. We had to modify to accommodate Duncan Aviation a bit. And I think as far as philosophy is... Um, and I think as far as philosophy is, we look at that as complicated. What's the history? There are people that moves in and out of our seats. Um, we sort of look at, I don't think anybody currently on the board uses it as they were the sole author or the city board was the author of the policy. Um, but we think it's a, we think it's a good policy. We try not to go too far. Um, I think, uh, as far as length and then the, the percentage as well, um, because, you know, we're in the same boat again. We're, we're worried about revenue, but we see the advantage of taking a piece of property that is not generating very much. So our philosophy is that, um, is that it really should be geared towards changing pieces of property that do not generate current revenue into a potential, uh, into a potential uh, for that, uh, to generate revenue. Um, I think one of the, I, I know that I, I hear some, some questions a lot of times about, uh, um, how come you went with that buyer of Provo High? Um, you know, one sort of hindsight blessing with that that didn't really go into consideration, but certainly as a hindsight for me was that it would have taken a lot, we would have, I think we would have been coming to you for the first time, sort of pushing a tax increment to make sure our sale went through. Um, for the development of that piece of property, we're very grateful that we didn't have to do that. Uh, at the same time, we recognize that, uh, for a lot of these deals, you know, Mr. Walter spends a lot more time in these offices than he does in ours. And we don't really want to be the scuttler. We really want to, we want to be helpful to the city. We see that the effort that the mayor and, and, and the council and Mr. Walter put into these, these situations. Um, and so we want to be able to be flexible and we're sort of taking the lead, even though the majority of the tax increment will inevitably come from the, the school district. Um, we really do want to be a bit different from the city because they're the ones. I especially feel that when we were on the verge of bringing something huge to you, you know, the, and, um, I'm grateful that we weren't in that situation, but it's made me appreciate your, their situation.
Really quick, Kim, they have in the policy 1940, um, line item number three, it says the board will support no project for which Provo City is not equally committed in terms of participation. So when that was put in there, that just made us all feel better because if you're for it and we're against it or vice versa, then we're not in. It's got to be decided on by both entities.
We're not necessarily saying we have to stay at 70% participation or 75. Um, we look at it from the standpoint of how much revenue might we generate while we're participating. I mean, the board would probably typically like to at least generate a little bit of revenue, so go on 100% is probably not going to happen very often. But we, we adjusted the policy so it's a little more flexible and gives the board a little bit more ability to work rather than having set.
To, to be able to have the discussion.
Yeah, to have the discussion and not say, well, you're at 75%. It just can't happen.
Okay, there were a couple of things that, that this particular board could change, you know. I'm sure that, um, that we, we talked about two is, uh, we, we'd like to have a set amount that everybody pays to necessarily, to, so if, if that, if there is some tax revenue that we previously thought of, then.
So, yeah, if their valuation, yeah, if it only takes, we, we, we like to investigate what's the goal of, of, of the increment? It's to build the path.
The parking garage.
Build the parking structure. What's it going to cost? Okay.
And so then once we get to that point.
We get to this point, it's my.
And so we put that language in lately. And then the other one that I wanted to talk about too is number number seven of the same policy. And this is required, but we would like to have partnerships between those entities that we support the tax increment and the school district. Because I feel like this is great that we're working with the city, but we could, we could have partnerships throughout the city with businesses and other, you know, community entities that could really benefit the school district. And if, if we could set, if we could kind of somehow.
At least bring that into the discussion.
Have a relationship with these different entities. That would be really nice.
So like we've done, can we be willing to do some engineering stuff in the high schools? Would some of the real estate you offer through, you know, the finance classes or anything like that, that would really benefit the students? I think they would probably enjoy doing it.
Exactly. Just an invitation to invest in our community since we're investing in them.
Well, and Duncan Aviation, um, we spoke about this in a meeting, I can't remember who, who brought this up, but there seemed like there was a plan for students to be able to get the training to become Duncan Aviation.
Which would be great.
Someday. And those are, those are household, sustainable jobs. Those are well-paid.
And we just need to somehow know how to connect into that.
Okay. Well, then at least have that conversation.
Yeah.
You know, it's a gap. You know, we love that you're heading for our community. We want to support and give our community some value. So you're not having those conversations with Duncan, you're having those conversations with RDA.
We don't have a relationship.
I don't have any.
We'd probably like an invite or an introduction, maybe.
Okay, so you're never meeting with Duncan?
We get the last presentation.
Yeah.
Where they want us to go.
So if you look back, I think some of, and I appreciate the ones the city's brought us, I think they've been good. I think, uh, you see them being built already. I get really excited when I see that. But if you look back in time, there's been a lot that haven't really ever gotten built. And those, I think that's a little discouraging. So, um, somewhere in the process, someone, either the economy changed or the, somebody wasn't doing their homework. So going forward, it, it's great that you guys are bringing great projects that are well-funded. So I would just ask that any project that comes, there's enough homework done that we're issuing credit to somebody, we better know how creditworthy they are.
Did you mention just one or two projects that were, that happened?
I can give you an example. I actually think it's real good.
Okay, go ahead.
The current courts building that we, that we just redid, um, the incentive on, had an incentive that we put together six years, six and a half years ago when I first came that was never built. And the answer to that is part of our duty to you is to, to make sure we're getting the very best deal with that developer and that we don't leave money on the table. And in that case, the gap came down to 300,000 in the school district and the city. Both felt like we had done enough and we weren't willing to go another 300,000. And I've actually regretted that.
So that stopped them?
Yeah, 300 stopped them. So when you don't see a deal, it may have as much to do with the fact that we just, we, we try to get that negotiation down to where they're going to walk away. And if we do a good job, we're a dollar off. And in that case, you know, 300,000 on a, you know, tens of million dollars deal, we were actually pretty close. And the contractor walked away from that deal over 300,000.
Well, if they walked away over 300,000, they probably shouldn't have built it anyway. 300,000.
Well, what happened is last minute, he fell out of contract with the property owner he was buying it from, and it required 300,000 more to get back under contract. And that was enough to make the deal fall apart. So I think my point is know that we're not always perfect in that negotiation, but we're trying to get down to that walk away point. And we were that close on that deal that they did walk away.
I felt like we almost lost Duncan the same way.
We were very close. Now, I think we were, we were flirting with, um, can we do it? And it was a good negotiation with them because we felt like they're really honorable in that they weren't playing us. But we, they needed to know if we could do certain things that they just had to have to put the deal together.
So there, then I don't know if I'm asking, you have clarification on this? If they wanted to have that part of the deal with Duncan Aviation that they would do classes for, whatever that is, whatever negotiations they, they felt would be important to be involved, is that something that they would relate to you and you would work that out with the, in the deal? Or is that something that they would do on their own? They could reach out and, and what would you say?
It's hard. And it's, it's hard because we're dealing with a developer, um, who just wants to get his project done. And what you're looking for is a long-term relationship. Right? And so I think the very best thing we can do is get you involved early so that you're building that relationship. Uh, so that when those asks come along, they feel like they're a partner with you and that they appreciate the contributions that you made to get them there.
Yeah, I don't think they should be deal killer type things, but I think that'd be a little bonus to, hey, we would really like this part, we would like you to partner with us as much as you can.
Not even necessarily contractual obligation. An invitation.
I think, one of the things is simply being aware of what the school district did to make it happen. Because five years from now, they unfortunately will have forgotten, you know, they don't reflect back on, uh, your role in bringing them here.
So we just had a trip back to see Duncan Aviation's facility.
He did. We were in. But I think we felt comfortable with our decision anyway.
Right. But if you're looking for a relationship, that would be a good cooperation.
No, and, and that would have been really great. I know when that came across, I thought, for, for me, it felt like, okay, we could do a free trip here just to go somewhere, you know, like it, and, and, you know, we don't need to do that. We didn't want to be, I didn't anyway, want to, I said, no, I don't need to go on that trip because I'm comfortable with it. But you're right, that would have been a great way to start a relationship.
My question on the board, our, one of our board positions was a position on the RDA committee. And that might be something we'd want to consider. I'm not sure why, if it was by law or whatever, I'm not sure how that got taken up, but that might be something that we can look to. You know, if you had a board member on that committee, then they could relate the board's feelings to that. Well, I'm not sure. I, it's just a.
If I could, um, the way that the different project areas are constructed, such as a pure redevelopment project area or a urban redevelopment area, then there would be a tax increment committee that would be created and of course the school district does, the tax, tax immunity would be part of that board. Community development areas, on the other hand, because they're done through interlocal agreements are not, are not handled the same way. And then just real quick, I mean, when we came to you for Duncan Aviation, we were approaching you as the, since the city was going to be building the ramp, it wasn't necessarily an ask of Duncan per se. So we didn't really bring Duncan into the equation to make the presentation. When we came to you with PEG development, we actually came to, you know, made sure that PEG came to your present, to your school board meetings and made a presentation and kind of demonstrated the reason why they were building that. So that was kind of a little bit of a difference in the way the two projects were handled.
I think are you doing that? And it was at that point that we did ask them if they could participate. So that's probably a really good thing. Then we could, thank you.
Don't give up on Duncan because they didn't participate in the.
I know they did. I know.
Yeah, with, with, when an area goes into place and then the development doesn't happen, just what's the negatives to that other than just, you know, we've had some hopes or something?
Another development might have been able to, to produce when they didn't. And then they go away and do their, their development somewhere else.
Okay.
So it's an opportunity cost.
The, the last thing I wanted to say, and I appreciate the mayor's comments about people trying to find that negotiation to, to fill, fill the gap. Um, I think any developer that comes in, you know, it'd almost be financial mismanagement for their business if they don't, if they think that there's an opportunity to get some additional money and they don't ask for it. So they don't necessarily have to turn over, you know, their financials or whatever. It's, it's just, so if someone's going to be developing in downtown or in one of these areas, they may not, we, we may not know what that gap is, but if there's not any disincentive for them to ask. And so I think we need to be careful about what we give away and, and really kind of find what, what, where's that true gap and try to minimize anything you cover.
And I think recently what we've done is tried to ask for some responses or answers to concerns of the school board and see whether we incentivize the development and market rate housing from what we were hearing from the school district and what our concerns were. So there was a lot of subsidized housing, but we need balance. And so it was one thing to make this, you know, a, a, of interest to help, you know, help them move along because this is market rate, this is, this helps that, or can generate some money in the downtown and can generate some self-tax revenues that benefit, you know, the school district as well.
We felt great about that from the presentation. I think we, we really did.
Thank you. So we'll go on to the next three items. We'll sort of lump these together. We have Mr. Graves here. We appreciate him being here. He's our, I'll hammer your title, but one of our public work directors over, over transportation, if that works. Okay. Um, and we're going to talk about, we'd like to talk about the progress of Provo High, the Lakeview Parkway, um, and how, and I think this question came from the school board is how we can work together to ensure safety around transportation areas of the new Provo High School. So I'm grateful that Mr. Graves is here to answer the technical questions. Um, but if you want to give us just a little update of, of how things are going there and.
I was just out there this morning. I talked to the projects and my tenants, but I walked the site a little bit, avoided the very large machinery that's dragging around. The project is moving along quickly. They have all of the plumbing and electrical footings that are going in. They've poured several of the concrete foundations for different sections of the project. Uh, they know that they have two years to get this done and they're moving. Um, most of the dirt that's been moved from those sites now is completed. And now it's just a matter of moving around the dirt on that site to make sure all the elevations are correct. And, um, you can see a lot of activity. If you get on our school district website and then click on the right-hand side on construction projects, you'll, you'll notice that on that new page, there is a camera link. So you can actually get online and follow the process and the progress that's going on, on that site. So, but I wanted to let you know, yeah, I was over there this morning in anticipation of this discussion. They poured 500 or created 500 subterranean piers, which they sunk down to the bedrock and then poured in the gravel and the concrete and compacted those things, 500. So I joked with them, so when the flood comes, the school, the school will remain. And he said, in all seriousness, he said, absolutely, it will. There's a lot of confidence that this school is not going anywhere due to seismic or flooding issues, which is one of the fundamental concerns about the sites.
Appreciate your opportunity of coming and this, this is a, an exciting project for, for all of us, but it's certainly not without its challenges. And I, I think every day you go out and visit that project site and see something happening different. As you may or may not be aware, over the past few years, uh, Provo City has been working on a project that we call Lakeview Parkway. Lakeview Parkway has been split up into several different, different segments. We currently have a portion of that project still surviving in the airport. Uh, the project's about 95% complete. We're hoping that that project will be ready to open sometime late September. That will certainly provide a little bit different, better access out to the airport and essentially the west part of the city. Uh, as far as the high school site right now with that connection, that would essentially route all of the, the traffic up Lake Shore Drive along the east boundary of the new Provo High School site. When, when the decision was made to, uh, locate the, the high school out to this area of the city, uh, we quickly became very concerned about what are we going to do with traffic? And how are we going to handle, you know, the, the need for, you know, people to be able to get to that site? And with the Lakeview Parkway, the future phases of Lakeview Parkway actually extended north and along the west developable boundary of our city up to, from the airport north to our city boundary of that 2,000 mile and then out to Chief Road. Fortunately, uh, we're, we're kind of the same as everyone else. Funds aren't unlimited and so, uh, you know, we have to try to fund those projects as, as the funds become available. When the, when the high school site came in initially, uh, I, I think most of you are probably aware that, that the design included from a large parking lot for student parking, one driveway access on the south end of the site out to Lake Shore Drive. Uh, we were really concerned about that simply because of the impacts that that would have. If you looked at either the current Provo High School site or the Tempe site, you know, there's multiple driveway points and access points for those parks and lots to be able to access the streets and then be able to disperse. And so we kind of began discussions with the administration, uh, some council discussion. We got a lot more council discussions still to go on this issue, but, uh, we got a lot more council discussions still to go on this issue, but we, we started looking at, is there ways that we could do portions of this Lakeview Parkway adjacent to the high school site that maybe make it, you know, a better situation and try to be ready for, for that project when it, when it opens up in, in about two years from now? And so we actually have been working with the design team for the high school, with the district personnel as well, and, and tried to make some adjustments to the high school site. Essentially, what this map on the board shows, on, on the top of the board is the street, which will be a public street, it's 1280 North Street. A good portion of that street is being built with the subdivision development that is north of the high school site. There's a section on the west end that they weren't planning to construct currently. As the high school came in, one of the things that we identified was the, the narrow street that had been proposed, and there had been some negotiations between the school district and the subdivision developer to have that street built out, the, the district was, was donating some property for that to be able to happen, but as we looked at that, we said, we need a little bit more width there. And it was, it was a challenge because the design team had already started locating the site for the high school. They went back, made some, some slight adjustments and shifted the, the actual building on the high school site a little bit to the south to provide about an additional 10 feet of width on that street. And so, you know, as, as they continue to move forward, you know, we, we had an opportunity because of some of the other development projects around, to obtain some fill material for the Lakeview Parkway project itself. We are currently have a contract with contractor out there who is along the west portion of the, the, or the school site, kind of from 1280 North, almost south where the, the drawing shows there, are actually out there hauling in fill materials so that it can begin the process of, of settlement and, you know, and in getting it ready for construction, hopefully in about a year, year and a half.
So that is Lakeview Parkway along the west?
Yeah, so this west boundary is Lakeview Parkway. We had, we had, you know, worked with the district a couple of years ago to actually purchase the right of way for Lakeview Parkway, and that, that, that was defined, as, again, going back to kind of this idea of the, the student parking lot access, main parking lot access and the concern there. As we had purchased right of way for Lakeview Parkway, Provo City had actually acquired about 12 to 15 acres of property south of the high school site. And so, as, as we started looking at this, we, we started looking at alternatives to say, are there ways that we could work together, partner with the district to be able to, to make this a better situation? And so, as we looked at that, we went in and said, okay, there's, there's some areas where if we do this, we're going to need some additional property from the district. What's shown on the top is parcel A was an area that was needed to extend 1280 North Street out to Lakeview Parkway. There's a section kind of on the southeast part of, of the project where initially there was a greenhouse that was proposed to be constructed. Now, you know, we're looking at, you know, they've been looking at trying to relocate that, we're, we're now saying, that could probably be a parcel, but maybe a, a future development or something can come in and utilize. And then, on the south end of, of the parking lot that's shown on the map, was property that was owned by Provo City, and we said, okay, let's, let's look if there's a way that we could kind of balance out what property trade would be, that the district would be giving up, that the city could afford to put back in the project to try to keep the school site whole. And so, the, the map actually has kind of a little table, and, and it's a little bit dynamic right now because there's still a few things happening with the site changes out of the high school. In fact, I think just, just Monday, there was a request to, to kind of modify the, the west end of 1280 North so that it had less impact on the ball fields that are being placed out there. And so this map does now kind of represent that. What we have also started doing and working with, with Westland Construction out on the high school site, is to actually begin cutting the alignment of, we're just calling it right now, the South Road. It's a, again, a local public street that is being, will be built by Provo City, but we'll, we'll actually go along the southeast portion of the site and then along the south part of the school site to tie back into Lakeview Parkway.
So the orange, is that where the road will go? And then parcel?
Yeah, so this would be the South roadway right here.
Okay, so then parcel B.
And so, we have a, a small parcel here, a larger parcel here, an additional parcel there, and then out here. This is the portion, the parcel that Provo City would be proposing to exchange back to the district. The other three parcels would be parcels that the district would exchange to Provo City.
Can you also add at one point, that South Road that you were describing, as it comes out onto Lake Shore Drive, there's the potential of putting a light there as well?
Yes.
So that will help cover traffic issues on the street?
Yeah, and so, we, we've committed to, we're going to evaluate that, we're, we're going to see what, what we would probably prefer to do, would try to, to direct traffic along Lakeview Parkway further south. Again, that's going to be kind of the financial thing for us, but one of the things that we're also working on right now is to try to look to see if there's a way that we could fund at least a portion of the construction, maybe half the roadway width, to extend it down to 620 North, and then connect 620 North from Lakeview Parkway to Lake Shore Drive, and ultimately to Chin Road.
So what would be connecting to 620, the south?
It's kind of south off this map, it would be down.
Oh, down, okay, so Lake Shore.
Uh huh, so it would actually be another new, new section of roadway that would connect to the existing Lake Shore Drive 620 North intersection.
So that light you mentioned, would it be better to have a stoplight or a roundabout?
We're not really sure. Right now, a roundabout would probably be pretty difficult because it's pretty constrained with the properties on there, and so probably a traffic signal would work best at that location.
Where, I, I missed it, I guess it wasn't listening. Where was the second entrance exit from the student parking lot? You said there's just one, and then 50 years.
So I think what, what will be happening is, is this parking lot will be reconfigured now.
Okay.
Okay, so that it could have multiple access points along that side.
Mark has a record of that.
The greenhouse somewhere near that, possibly. It was lots of.
Where, where was the location of the, the traffic light, signal light that was discussed?
You're kind of looking at this intersection right here.
Okay.
And, and what we've kind of agreed, agreed with the, the engineer that did the traffic study for the school site was, it was kind of, may be needed, it may not be needed, we said, let's not really commit to that until we see if, you know, if, if we are going to need it, and I think if, if that's going to be needed, I think, you know, we'll, we'll make that decision. Either, you know, prior to the school opening, maybe we'll have a little bit more information. If we can't connect to 620 North, it may become something that would be more important to do.
And then, would there be consideration of a signal on Lakeview Parkway?
Long term, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would see one or both of those intersections probably being signalized at some point. Right now, what this, what this does, and this, this was kind of something from our public safety people, particularly our fire people, saying, this, this is a great thing because it gives us access all the way around the high school site for public safety, so they, they were pretty excited when some of these plans were formed. You know, ultimately, what the timeframe would be, you know, we would look to have Lakeview Parkway extend south to Center Street and then connect over to the road to the airport, but isn't necessarily as critical to get that section of it in prior to the high school opening. These other, these other locations are probably ones we're focusing on right now.
Shannon, two of those tennis courts would probably make a great greenhouse.
I love, I love, I'm really excited about this. I had a question for you right now. Lakeview Elementary School is having safety issues with construction trucks coming down Lake Shore Drive, and is there, I mean, what, what plans are in place to make that more safe for these kids?
One of the problems we have is we have three large projects happening all at once, all trying to get in there. We got the high school project, we got this fill material being brought in for the street project, and then we have the subdivision going. What we've, all of those contractors from, from our perspective, is that even though it's probably not totally desirable, and if I lived on Lake Shore Drive, I wouldn't probably like what I, what the city's telling them, but we see that as probably a preferred alternative to use Center Street and Lake Shore Drive up to this area rather than coming past the elementary school on 13.
I think the people who are concerned are the people who live on Lake Shore Drive, having to cross Lake Shore Drive.
Yes. We recently had some, some discussions, and I know, I saw an email go out, I think it went out to Mark Wheeler yesterday, talking about, are there some things that we could do partnering with the contractor for the high school site and our contractor to maybe provide a construction flagger type operation where they could help, you know, control those trucks or pedestrians that need to cross the roadway, rather than, than trying to go to a, a school crossing guard type situation that, that may not be quite as safe? And so, we're, we're actively pursuing that right now. It wouldn't take us long to implement something like that, it could be done very quick, and so I think we're, we're looking in that direction right now.
I've had some major heartburn over, you know, access to the school, all being off of Lake Shore Drive, and what, what you're showing here, I think has been said before, I mean, this, this is, this looks wonderful compared to what, what we were looking at before. I think you guys have done just a tremendous job finding something that, that will work in, kind of knowing a little bit of what the project schedule was for Lake Shore Drive, and the things that you guys have been doing to bring this to pass in, in two years, I think is, is great. You know, there are other projects that have been kind of put on hold, de-prioritized and all of this stuff, and so, one, just thank you, I think you guys have done wonderful. I think this is an example of what can happen with Provo City and, and the board when we work together. I just also have to throw out that, you know, your decisions affect the city and our decisions affect the school district, and, you know, some of those consequences are short-term, like construction trucks rumbling down Lakeview, Lake Shore Drive, and then other consequences run one out, so just, when we're making these big decisions, some coordination, in sitting through some of your early presentations on, you know, why this site and, you know, pros and cons, there were a lot of, in my opinion, cons that weren't really thought about because they weren't direct costs to the school district, but you can see how, you know, the city's going to be spending millions of dollars to, to help with accommodating the, the placement of this, and, and there's, there's other citizens who've been waiting for their projects to happen, and now it just got bumped back, and so, you know, we, we shouldn't make these decisions in, in a vacuum because it has so much impact on, on other things, and so, just as we were talking about, we hope Duncan understands what the, the school district did to help get them there, we hope that you realize how much the city is kind of scrambling and, and doing to, to make this work, and it's, it wasn't a small, small deal.
As we love the kids.
Yeah, we're, we're all looking now for the best interest of.
We, we, that is not just orange lines on a, on a slide. We recognize that's tremendous effort, and, and, you know, more than we could ask for, and we.
More than we expected.
What we expected, and we appreciate the city going above and beyond, I mean, this is, this is the city jumping way in, we recognize that.
Sorry, kind of one of my smiling moments is, Dave and I took a lot of arrows several years ago, standing in front of these neighbors, justifying this corridor that we set aside for future road, and it's those same neighbors now, we're saying, why isn't this road done?
Are there any other questions for Mr. Graves?
I guess I just, if it's okay, I just have one quick comment, not necessarily from Mr. Graves, but we get, this is kind of a, an extension to what Mr. Harding just mentioned, we get a lot of blame for all of the constructions going on out there, all the heavy traffic going on around, all the new trucks, when in reality, we know that there are ultimately going to be about 1,200 new homes to the northwest, which wasn't our decision and which isn't our responsibility for those trucks and that construction and that impact, and we know that there are other things going on. So, one of the challenges in the partnerships is that we all kind of understand, when we get those nasty emails calling us clowns and all kinds of other disrespectful terms, that the reality is there's a lot of clowns, I guess. It's not just the school district kind, it's all of us are owning what's happening out west, and I think that that's getting forgotten from time to time in this discussion.
So, I, I appreciate that, and I think we're trying to take ownership of that as well, and I think there really is a great partnership between the district and their contractor, and the city and our contractor, and, you know, I mean, they're all trying to move as quickly as they can, and it.
There's lots going on out there.
A lot happening.
You guys have been great.
I, I have some maps, I don't know if anyone's interested, it just kind of has these property calculations and tabulations, and I'll, I didn't have enough to pass around, and that's why we were scrambling to start meeting to try to get this map so that everyone could see it, but, thank you.
So the last part of this discussion, some of the risks and concerns, I think it was, this last fall, it was approached by trauma surgeons, and they had come through a process with the public health department, trying to put together some regulations for trampolines. Currently, there are only three states, or just a few states that actually have regulations for, for these gyms, and our state doesn't, and the trauma surgeons are seeing really severe injuries coming from these gyms, and so, and they, they make their money on bringing people back together again, but they're very concerned. The types of injuries they were seeing, they typically see just in high-speed crashes, like a broken tibia, fibula, open fractures, spinal fractures, they're seeing some really severe injuries that, that were kind of life-altering, even if they were paralyzed, these are repetitive injuries where you really won't ever run again like you did before, and these are very active kids, and they're really concerned, and so, regulations, they have some issues, trying to get that trust through the health department that came to us, and so I've been working with the stakeholder group, who have involved someone from the administration, which is our interim chief, fire chief, who oversees the paramedics, and they've had to develop procedures and policies of how to get someone out of a phone pit if they have a neck injury, they've had to just sort of learn how to deal with these as they go so that they can protect our, our citizens the best way, and, and so what we're doing is trying to get together some regulations for these gyms, and we have a gym owner, we have the interim fire chief, we have someone from the health department, and we have, as stakeholders, we also have a, a parent of a, his son was paralyzed in an accident in the gym, and we've tried to bring this group together to try to figure out what is the best way, what are the best regulations and requirements, and we're getting very, very close right now, and just waiting to hear back from a, not a trampoline gym, but a, a gymnastics gym that has, that is part of a national association where they have best practices, just trying to get feedback from there before we can send it to the mayor, and then, and then the council to look at, and just wanted to give you a heads up that, that this is, this is going on. They, when the surgeons, they won't look, they have four severe injuries, and, and they're just really trauma-centered, they can see the kids who need to, maybe don't go immediately to the hospital, they go there with their doctor, they have maybe a broken or something, but they're just seeing the most, the worst accidents, and this was a long time, not that many more months. So they started a public. So they started a public information sort of process, and they went out and they talked basically to scout groups and business groups, and they tried to get information out to everybody. And they did see a decline in these injuries the next year, but then the following year, they saw the same upward curve in incidents, and they just were very concerned. So just wanted to let you know that we're working on this. The hope is to do something for our city, but really, it's a statewide issue. And I've reached out to Kurt Ramble, Senator Ramble and Representative Dean Sunpay, both they have both agreed to, you know, look into it on a statewide level because I think that's the next step. But this, we're hoping could be used as a model and we can do it a little quicker than something that goes through the state legislatures because when other gyms come on, they can start trying to learn by trial and error too, and we just really don't want that to happen.
How many are there now locally in Provo?
The main one is Lowe's at Street Sports, but we had another one that we thought was going to be a circus tricks on University Avenue.
Is that?
We thought that was going to be one, but our intern was able to finally get ahold of somebody because the district construction is hard to get somebody. But they, they're just going to be an office. It's their sort of national office there. They do have some equipment in there, I think, for just sort of staging and dentals and things, but they, it's not going to be a national gym. And that's what we were concerned about coming online and not having regulations in place. We're just really worried that someone just opens up a gym and they start learning, "Oh, a toe pit needs to be deeper because someone got injured," or, "Oh, we need more padding here or there." You know, it's just a real concern right now. We want to make sure that there's some regulations in place to help people.
Does Orem have any? Because they have so- I know, I mean, they have so many.
Oh, regulations? No, we did. We met with, we met with Orem City Council, we invited them to be part of the stakeholder group. They didn't send a representative to take part in this. I also met with the manager of Game Time. I just kind of walked in and started, you know, asking if they'd show me around. And I was really trying to gather information for what really makes it safe, what's unsafe, and what policies and procedures do they already have in place? Because we want to learn from people who have had some experience doing this. And so, we did invite Orem to participate, and I don't know, you know, they weren't, you know, at this time weren't able to participate, so.
You may want to consider inviting somebody from State Risk Management to your meetings because currently, those types of places are on the unapproved list. So when somebody calls and says, "Can we do a field trip out to the trampoline places?" we have to say, "No, can't. It's not approved because of the liability." But they might, what will happen is you guys go through this whole process, and the trampoline companies are getting excited and they're going to think they can come to the school district and do all these field trips, and we're still going to have to tell them, "No." So just, you might, in addition to your legislators, you might want to reach out to somebody at State Risk. Could I give you a couple of contact names? It just might help with your process.
They might add additional data gathered.
Yeah.
They got through approval process and said, "No, this is not true." They might have.
And you've probably seen more articles coming out in the newspaper, you know, talking about this very thing to you. So there is some national data to sort of check out what we're seeing here in Provo.
I think that's a great idea because it's-
I was just teasing you. I said Duncan, not Chris.
Okay. Just, it's a carrot for the gyms. If they can accept some regulations and, you know, which are costly to them, but on the flip side, now they can accept field trips and things like that.
Risk might feel better about it.
That, you know, we might, if there's someone there, we could ask, "Okay, Risk, you know, what would be necessary for them to become approved?" And if those became the regulations, that's just a carrot to go along with the stick, I guess, something that they would want.
So you mentioned you've had some connection with the county health department. I serve with Utah County Health Board of Health. And we get, I think every six months, we get an updated list of the exact data from throughout Utah County of the various types of injuries that are reported. If you haven't seen that, I definitely suggest you reach out to Ralph Clay. It's a public document and it's updated twice a year. And there will be probably in October, there'll be another public meeting where that will be discussed. So just another opportunity, really good data.
I'll make a little note for myself. And I'll get a contact and I'll send it to you. Okay, would you just send that to me with Ralph Clay's information? Sure. And then I just would like to say too, that it's been a very positive. I mean, you get all these different stakeholders from all different, you know, opinions and positions and experiences, very real difficult experiences. But we've been able to come together with what I think is really good, really good looks looking in. And, you know, not everyone, not everyone will want to see in this, right, just back and forth, and not everyone kind of knows this is for me. And I think that's kind of the way it is when you come to something, you know, it's, most of what they feel is important is in there and there are a few things that are willing to say, "Okay, I get that, you know, I'm not going to do everything." So that's kind of been the process so far. In fact, the person who visited from the health department, she only came to one meeting that as she was leaving, she said, "I can't believe you were able to do this and not have the kind of animosity that, I guess, maybe they saw some, a little more." It was a little more difficult, but I'm not sure the process, I wasn't there, but she was impressed with the process so far. I've been impressed too. This, we have a really great group of stakeholders who, their primary interest is to make it safe. They love that kids are active, they love that they're putting out their tablets and they're telling them that they're doing something active. We just want them to be able to do it safely.
I want to make a comment. I mean, at the risk of sounding like a bad mom, my kids at Lowe's every day, every single day, is there because that's all people do. It's all, like he, even when he's walking down the street, he's moving that close. Right, you know? Right, no, right, right, no. And I did, so our first trip over to Lowe's, the way this summer, they spent, he was required and there's a sign on the door saying, "Because of regulations from the city, we need to do this." And they spent one-on-one with him, probably, maybe because he was the only one that was there that whole month, three minutes, me told, "This is okay, this is not okay, this is why, this is..." Our experience at Lowe's has been really, really, really good. And what I would hate to see, obviously, it's my son, I don't want him to be injured. Obviously, and it does make me a little nervous, but I sit down and I watch him. What I would really hate to see is regulations that aren't effective. Sometimes we get a list of rules and regulations, but they aren't, and so we can say, "Oh, look at this great thing we've done," but it's not having an impact on what, that's probably not suggesting that's the case here. But I just encourage an awareness of that, to just say, "We got this rule, so look at the great thing we did," and this data hasn't been changed.
Yeah, and that's something-
Hasn't done anything.
Right, and that's something that we would, that we would like to, that we will look at, not like to, but we will look at. The reason why we're doing this is to decrease disparity and the number of occurrences. And if we're not decreasing the severity and the number of occurrences, then we're not doing something right. And that's the whole point. And so, without any regulations in place, we don't know. We don't know if we're going to be able to move the needle. And initially, we may see an increase of occurrences because people are being required to report everything. And so, we need, really need almost even more than a year. We need to see kind of where this is going to shake out. Once we've started it, once people are reporting and know to report everything, even if you're leaving and just feel like, "Oh, my neck was, kind of bothered me a little bit," we'll report it so that we at least know that there was, maybe something started there, you know? And then, find out later that they go to the doctor and, "Oh, you do have a fracture that you didn't know about." We want everything reported so we have some real numbers to go by. And so, that's why it's sort of this real positive relationship, we want to keep this positive relationship, we want people to report so that we have real numbers to do. So we actually might see an increase in occurrences.
Well, our medical list during Lowe's has been a good one, that goes following through on what they say they're going to be doing because we went through it.
And they, you know, we're looking at all the things, we're looking at more expert areas, you know, and having expert areas clearly marked, and they have to have training in order to use the expert areas.
Oh, you're experts, so that's probably why you have it. Exactly.
And so, but making sure that people aren't going into the expert area their first time and then trying to attempt something.
Yeah, no, and they have it all roped off and there's people that like, "It's very, well, I sit and watch, and he doesn't look like me, someone knows he's my kid." So it seems they're watching, and they don't know I watch him. You know, it's kind of, it's kind of interesting experience, but it's been good, really, it's been, it's been really good.
Well, then, we'll try to have other questions for final one. Just really appreciate you being here and we can keep these conversations, it's a great way to collaborate and to share information that affects Provo. All right, Steve, I feel like we want, you know, we're dealing with the same citizens and trying to make our city a great place to live and learn, and so I appreciate you being here. Mary, you had something to say?
I wanted to say, since we've had a lot of conversation about the relationship, and I'd like to compliment Superintendent Kotel and Stephanie. I've had an opportunity to work with both of their predecessors, and I believe foundation for this relationship rests freely on their shoulders. And so, I'd just like to tell them each, I enjoy working with them and how much confidence I have in them.
Likewise.
Okay, well, the part of your interview, you were a gym, did you?
I'll say that.
Probably so.
Somebody, somebody-